We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It's Monday, November 14th, and we're starting late today because we've just come from the National Merit Scholar Reception, which is a wonderful event. And we're fortunate that in our district, in all the years that I've been here, it's been an annual event honoring our National Merit Scholars and commended students and National Merit semifinalists. Dr. Richardson, are there agenda changes?
Yes, if you look in your table file, you'll see that we have a few agenda changes this evening. First of all, as we've completed the canvassing of the results on the special election, the information changed by one vote from total voters voting from 58-40 up to 58-40 from 58-39. Not really going to make any, not going to make any changes in the way things turned out, but just that minor adjustment. We also have a one-person item added in the table file and also two-year lease agreement with the Northfield Gymnastics Club.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll add those items to the agenda as we move forward. We have opportunity now for public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the school district to address the board. We ask that you speak from the podium, state your name and the group you represent if you are here speaking on behalf of a group, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. I also want to remind the public that this is not an opportunity to engage in debate or dialogue with the board, but rather a listening opportunity for the board, which we very much appreciate. So is there anybody here who wishes to address the board? No one hiding behind the podium that I can't see? Okay, very good. Well, with that, we'll turn on, move to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 24th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? It's moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion, corrections, comments? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 24th, 2011, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If motion carries, those minutes are approved. Onto announcements and recognitions, and I am thrilled to announce that Dr. Richardson has been named the 2012 Minnesota Superintendent of the Year. Some of us on this board have been fortunate enough to work with Dr. Richardson since he came to the district in 2004, and he has demonstrated extraordinary leadership in navigating the school district's financial challenges and at the same time bringing forth really powerful program changes to improve teaching and learning in the district. He is a truly gifted administrator. He's a long-range planner, which we see especially in our financial planning, but also with curriculum and teaching and learning issues, and yet he really deals very thoroughly and sensitively with day-to-day issues that come up. He is a tireless advocate for education, not just at the local level, but also at the state and the national levels. He is a leader in many statewide coalitions who are working together to try to solve statewide funding challenges and to really envision 21st century educational reform. I really believe that Dr. Richardson's leadership is an example, a model for the nation. Congratulations to you, Dr. Richardson. We are thrilled that you're here with us.
Thank you.
And now we'll turn to other good things happening in the district.
Okay, and yes, I have a number of lovely announcements. First of all, would like to recognize our Greenville Park students who generated $788.80 in trick-or-treat for UNICEF donations. Way to go, Gecko's! Also, Bridgewater Elementary held its annual Veterans Day Assembly last Friday, and I was able to be there, as were several of our board members. Students sang songs, read poems, provided information about our veterans and those who are currently serving the Air Forces. Also had a number of veterans that were there to be honored, which was great. It was really a great way to honor the heroes who provided us the many liberties that we enjoy today, and I think the vets that were there were very, very humbled and very, very honored to have been recognized. So again, thank you very much to Bridgewater for that activity. Also, congratulations to our district band programs, as they held their first concert last Monday night at the high school. Directors Dr. Jenny, Mr. Beck, Mr. Fryer, and Mrs. Williams did an outstanding job of directing the bands to honor the Civil War era. The finale was played by band members combining everyone 5th through 12th grade, and the students were amazing. So again, congratulations to the band program. Also, congratulations to the students that participated in the 2011 Fall Chess Tournament on Saturday, November 5th, hosted by South Central Service Cooperative and Mankato Community Education Recreation. Students were awarded by grade level and also as division champions. Peter Hillman from Sibley Elementary School placed second at the second grade level and second in the primary division. We are also very pleased to announce that thanks to overwhelming support of students, staff, and the community, that Lace for the Cure raised over $16,000 to fight breast cancer. This strong support has solidified the Lace for the Cure tradition for our Raiders Girls Soccer Program. So again, way to go, girls! West Side Story's been a huge success. All of the performances are sold out, including the added performance on Thursday, November the 10th. This performance sold out in less than 24 hours after it was added to the list. This week also is National College Application Week. Northfield High School is one of just 15 pilot sites across the state for this new initiative through the Department of Education. There are several activities planned throughout the week. I see Joel is now out of his college sweatshirt, but during the day today, I saw a number of folks wearing their college sweatshirts and other accoutrement. There are several activities planned throughout the week, and students will have an opportunity to get assistance on writing resumes, applications, college essays, and find out more about financial aid. The activities are available to all of the students at Northfield High School. Week will culminate in a visit by Assistant Commissioner of Education, Elia Brugema, on Monday, November the 21st, and the week is being sponsored by the Torch Team. And finally, our Torch Program was awarded a grant to the Department of Higher Education to support a financial literacy program. The Torch Team is partnering with Faribault Schools to improve the financial literacy and debt management skills of low-income and minority Rice County youth, thereby preparing the students to make sound financial decisions in pursuit of post-secondary education. The grant award was for $18,000 and will support a coordinator for this new initiative called Dollars and Cents. So again, congratulations to all of our students and staff who've been working on various activities to support our school district.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything to add? Well, I do just, as I said at the beginning, we came from the National Merit Reception, which is just such a great event, and one of our board members had a child who was recognized, Muriel Carpenter. We have three National Merit semifinalists this year, and Noel, were you keeping count how many commended students?
Seven.
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 So 10 altogether.
Okay, so 10 altogether, students were on it. And this is just, it's such a delightful event. It's an opportunity for students to recognize a teacher that has really made a difference in their lives and an opportunity for the teachers to just talk a little bit about what makes these different students special and also to acknowledge the parents and the role that parents play in developing these students. So it's a delightful event, and it's a joy to be there, and that's why we're starting late tonight. Anything else? Okay, on we go. Our first item for discussion is the Northfield High School's School Improvement Plan Report. So we have our principal, Joel Lear, here.
Switching gears a little bit from recently. You will find at your tables, coincidentally, in Vikings purple color, a packet that provides you the PowerPoint presentation. Ellen, I'm sure you'll appreciate that as well. Yeah, it was interesting, I was having a conversation actually with Mr. Hillman earlier today, and I brought up the suggestion that I do a watermark on each slide with the Vikings' logo. He did graciously talk me out of that, but one of the things more seriously we talked about in reference to the site improvement plan is that to get up in front of you and literally in a matter of minutes, talk about all the things that were, I'm proud of personally as the principal of the high school, but those are all the things, the great things that are happening. So I would encourage you, above and beyond the site improvement plan, which is a very specific, narrow, and Matt described it as a moment in time, that I encourage you to ask questions, visit the school, talk to teachers, talk to administration, and talk to students, and find out what cool things are going on, because we do have a number of great things. I think the National Merit Reception is an example of some of the cool things that are happening within the confines of a classroom between student and teacher, but there are so many things going on that I just, I would love to be able to, you know, Dr. Richardson does the periodic article in the paper, and I think that if we did one every issue of the paper, we probably would only tip the tip of the iceberg of the things that are going on. So I would encourage you to pursue follow-up questions or follow-up interests in the things we're doing at the high school. But on to the site improvement progress report and improvement plan, and thank you for this opportunity to share this information with you. As we have the previous few years, we've, the high school has worked under two goals. One, a fairly general goal to improve student climate that has seen some evolution in different directions depending on the time period we're in, and then also a specific academic goal to improve student achievement. Some of the positives about the progress report, or some of the positive, some of the information about the climate goal as we moved from last year into this year, that we were pleased with, 75% over a two-year period, 75% of students at the high school indicated in surveys that bullying is not a big problem at the high school. Now, we celebrate that in the sense that we know that number could be far worse. We also know that until that number hits 100%, or that bullying is unrecognizable, that it's an unsatisfactory place to settle. So we continue to look at ways, both what I would call kind of anecdotal activities and also very structured plans, to move us in a direction where students are more and more comfortable and safe and feeling like this is a place where bullying isn't allowed and is not tolerated, and students and staff alike understand what that relationship looks like. Some of the positives that we saw, and I refer to this as my Weight Watchers section, because we have three areas where we felt we saw improvement, I should always do the analogy and then explain it afterward, but it's kind of that weight loss plan where you set yourself a goal, and in all three areas, you know, in areas, so you've lost weight, but you didn't quite get to that level you were hoping for. And I would say that these three, specific to the climate goal, are kind of in that area. We had an 11% drop in the number of students who witnessed, other students being picked on for their appearance. We had a 4% increase in the number of students who believe teachers and students respect one another, and that's a three-year running survey of information that we've worked with. And then again, discipline referrals related to issues of respect decreased by another 9%. Our goal was 10%, but it is the third year in a row that we have had at least a 9% drop. And we've set a 10% goal each year. Last year, if you remember, it was a 20% drop in overall referrals regarding issues of respect between students and staff. So what does that mean? This is the flip side of that Weight Watchers scenario. We are pleased with those increases and decreases as they are appropriate, but we also share a concern that still 63% of students are saying that they're witnessing some form of bullying. We have had, and actually Amanda Tracy is here, our Site Council Chair, and we've talked as a Site Council about some of the survey questions we asked in the previous three-year surveys, and also we've altered our survey a bit moving into this year as kind of a new focus of our site, of our climate goal. And what we have found is that we find ourselves sitting around talking a lot about, well, what does that exactly mean? Because we're asking questions that get to questions like, students are being picked on, but we want to know more than that, because ultimately, the more we know about those, the better we can respond to it. I think we find ourselves with our survey information trying to develop a plan that feels a little bit like a shot in the dark, that we hope these things have the positive effect. And students have really participated, and we'll get to that in a moment here, students have really kind of picked up the torch in terms of some of the things we've done as a climate goal regarding bullying and respect in our school community. But again, we almost again find ourselves kind of saying, well, we hope that had the effect we were hoping for, rather than really being able to correlate some very specific details of those questions. So we have actually headed into this fall, and this week, as you'll see in a moment, we're pursuing some follow-up questions in a survey that we'll issue to students this week in the computer lab on Server Monkey, which are essentially digging down further than the survey that we do with the class meetings the first week of the school year. So we've kind of identified three areas of concern, which we'll show you in a moment here, and then those three areas of concern kind of broadened by a series of questions that hopefully will get us to a point where as a Site Council then moving forward from the rest of the year, we'll be able to really specify what are the details and what are the aspects of our climate that we really need to address, so that we can say, we're doing this because of this concern, and we got this result, and really being able to dig down in that way. And then the second concern that continues is that 66, about two-thirds of the students believe that students and teachers respect one another. We would love to see that number quickly approaching 100%, because I do think that that's a realistic, realistic goal. Implications of that, as I mentioned, the survey, and I've left one of the three kind of problems of emphasis out here, that the improved survey will pinpoint where the issues of having a place, feeling safe, and feeling empowered was the third area that we're going to look at, where those areas at NAGS truly lie. And again, we're going to be doing that survey electronically on Friday and then this coming Monday, and we'll be able to share those results back with the staff at our staff development activities on Wednesday. Then subsequently, under Amanda's leadership, we'll kind of zero in on some details of what we can do with our staff development and also with our activities with our students, so that hopefully those numbers can improve significantly and that we can truly draw a correlation between what things are that we're doing and what the results are of that survey, so that we can really correlate those two. And then it's also obvious to us really over the last, and I would say last year and a half, that our positive talk and our frequent talk about the climate goal with students really functions as a catalyst for students to take upon themselves initiatives that bring about a positive change. As you, if you came in the main entrance to the high school this evening, there are two display cabinets, one that has held the Bullying Pledge, which is a canvassed painting with signatures from the student body that basically commits to bullying-free school. The second, which has been added just last week, is a series of Post-it notes, again, kind of piggybacking on that and making declarations about kind of what we need to do and what we're going to do to make this a safe place for all. And that really, you know, again, that was a truly independent student project, and with the help of Student Service Learning Class and the Leadership Class, both of those groups have really embraced this idea of having that goal function as a living, breathing item for both adults and students in the building. Excuse me. And we just feel that that type of talk needs to continue. Again, one of the things I mentioned to Mr. Hillman today was that the concern that it continues to be a living, breathing document, and it really has shown us a great opportunity when we put the document in the hands of kids, whether it be formally or just informally, with an idea that they really are interested in running with it. A lot of kids have a concern about how the school climate function, because it is, as you heard some of the students in the National Merit Reception, it's more than about academics. It has to be a whole experience for them. So the Student Achievement Goal progress report, the, really the three areas that we looked at were continued emphasis of the goal-setting and goal accomplishment in PLCs, continued improvement of the statistics that we gather in the ninth-grade academy, and then also, and this was, if you remember, last year, Mr. Peshan and I from middle school talked about, that we sat down with Dr. Richardson and our staff development people and kind of devised a common student achievement goal that would allow us to encompass all of the pieces that are coming into play with the PLCs, and really focused in on the idea of passing rates. What was interesting at the time was that when we talked about passing rates, we had already been talking as a high school entity about decreasing failure rates, and I realized that that's essentially the same thing, only in reverse. But when we talk about Ds and Fs, sometimes, you know, it takes a little bit of a leap to think, well, that means that fewer students are failing classes, fewer students need to repeat classes, more students are progressing at what we would call the expected rate toward graduation. So when Roger Jenny, and I'm going to leap to the bottom of this, emailed earlier this year and said, you're not going to believe this, but your graduation rate is over 99%. And he said, he's, now this is Roger Jenny, he doesn't remember ever seeing 99% as a passing rate in any publication that he's listed. So he twice, actually, I should have written this twice, but he used the words truly amazing twice to describe the fact that we had 306 graduates and 303 of them, excuse me, we had 303, 306 of them started and finished on time over that four-year period. So I don't mind using Roger's quotes when, well, I shouldn't say that. I never mind using Roger's quotes. But some of the details that lead up to that, again, over the, and as I mentioned, a very well-publicized statistic that we had, about 1 in 4 students in the ninth grade as they moved through our school were failing a class or more from 2005 to 2009. As you remember, the 9-10 school year, we moved that number to 14%, and then coming, then I look at the dates, or I get confused, the 10-11 school year saw further increase in that number down to 11%. So we were looking at, you know, statistics from that '05 to '09 period where it was pages upon pages of students who were failing a class or more, and now it comes in this small little document. We're not satisfied with it yet, but when I talk with my counterparts around the conference around the region and hear the percentages that they are working from, it does make me happy that we are making that kind of progress. And I really do believe this is that first year, and that graduation rate would be one example, and the 11% would be another, where our PLCs are zeroed in on that idea, let's get kids passing. And it sounds kind of like a very general, simple, you know, guideline, but when you realize what that impacts and what that affects in terms of that four-year program for students, it really is impressive to see numbers like that, 99.02, and we hope that, you know, as I've mentioned to some people, that we don't think 100% is out of the question, given where we're at this year. So that is a celebration. Again, implications of that would be just a further call to sharpen the focus of those PLC goals. The PLC goals are talking about passing rates, but each week, teachers are able to dig down into the data and say, well, what really are the issues with what groups of kids that are making them struggle in terms of passing classes? Kevin Dahl, our civics teacher, talked earlier this year about the idea of getting students to pass, and said, well, the next step then is to get them to Cs, and then, and kind of moving down the line. So I think that there are many groups that are already recognizing that, well, what's the next step then? That we don't rest on, okay, they're passing, that's good enough, that we're saying, well, let's get them to pass at a higher rate. And so it's fun to listen to them talking about that as well. Working towards single-digit percentage failure rate, we're hoping to see that number as soon as next year when we report back to you, given the steps that we've worked this way. And then one of the things that I would argue is kind of the, is going to become the cornerstone for what we do as a site improvement team, is our RTI model, essentially our secondary RTI model, the system of interventions that we're putting in place really to address all learners and at all struggling levels. So as we move forward in the '11-'12 school year, we maintain the same goal, but I will explain kind of how this shifts from that focus of truly a general PLC goal to what we are doing as a strategic systematic interventions team. We will demonstrate increased proficiency for all students in the essential learnings of all content areas, and that will be again focused on passing rates. And our need there again is that Weight Watchers phenomenon, that we still have 11% of our ninth graders are failing a class, so we want to see that number dwindle even further, working toward, working towards 0%. Excuse me. And our second goal, the climate goal, and I mentioned that we shifted the survey a bit, and with 15 questions that we gave students at the class meetings, and these were the three that kind of rose to the top as we began to digest the data. Now, the arrows represent what our goal is. The boxes represent where our present situation. So our survey indicated that 53% of students feel empowered in our school, that we believe that that's an awfully low number, given what we feel is an opportunity to allow students to have their voices heard and listened to and responded to. So one of the things we talked about as a Site Council was that we want to make sure that we're understanding what that means and that they are understanding what we mean when we talk about feeling empowered. So the survey coming up at the end of this week really drills down into that and talks about having people willing to listen, that you feel like you can bring about a positive change, and really breaking that down into pieces so we know what we're responding to with our student body, and we think that we'll be able to see that number bound up quite significantly. The second piece was that students feel safe, although 83%, you know, in a typical survey is a pretty decent number, that means that 17% of our students on a daily basis are walking through our halls not feeling as safe as they could, and that is a concern. And so we want to, you can see that we want to boost that by at least 5%, and we actually, on the survey coming up, break that down literally into individual places and areas of the school, and it might be at an event, or it might actually be in a physical spot in the building. So we really want to trace that back to exactly where the areas of emphasis need to be, because obviously, we have a big institution, so to say, we'll make the whole place safer without really knowing what that means is a little bit of a task. And then the third one is that the question of having a place. We want students to feel that no matter what, there's at least one place where they belong. It might be a classroom, it might be an activity, it might be with a particular person or a friend or something along those lines. And again, but the question just reads a place, and for those 22% that don't feel they have a place, we want to find out what the detail, what's inhibiting them. So we're looking forward to that data so that we can really begin to dig down and respond to it and make a positive impact on our students. So here's how we get there with the Student Achievement and Climate Goal. PLCs in ninth-grade academy, obviously, you're familiar with. Something we did last spring as a pilot was a structured study center where we took students who in the third quarter had failed a class or more and assigned them to a study center that was much smaller than a general study hall, where the teacher supervising that study center had access to all of the student academic information. So they knew what assignments were out, what assignments were late, what they were working on currently, and a real significant body of communication with that most particular student's teachers went into play so that we could really address those issues of the pass/fail in those classes. Those study centers run about 3 to 10 students, so it's, like I said, it's a much smaller than our, than our study halls that are running about 30 to 35. Anecdotally, we're seeing some real positive results. So if you talk to the teachers, they feel they're making a difference. We look forward, as we get down the road, to say, well, how much of a difference are we making statistically? So we're excited about that. The Seminar 10 is a kind of an evolution of what we did last year with the 10th Grade Loop, where a section of our students in the ninth-grade academy moved out into 10th Grade and functioned under kind of an academy-light program. The structure was meant well, but just it didn't function the way we'd hoped it would. And a lot of the feedback from those teachers who were working with the Loop students said, you know, most of our students can get the regular curriculum in a regular setting if they have that additional layer of support. So what we did was we funneled that attention into a Seminar 10, which looks a lot like the ninth-grade seminar that's attached to the academy, where a teacher, an educational assistant, and in two of the three situations where we have seminar, there's a special education teacher working with a caseload, or working with her caseload in that, in that section of seminar. And so they have, again, open access to all of the students' academic information, so it's very, very difficult to fall behind, to not turn things in, to be late on assignments, to not be ready for a test. Students can make up tests in those class periods, they can be taking exams in those class periods. So we're really excited to see that, as I work in the world of analogies, I apologize for those of you that don't function there, but if the ninth-grade academy is the nest, the 10th-grade seminar is the bird on the ledge, with the hope that, you know, now the next step, or if mom pushes the bird, ah, is probably not the best analogy, but maybe it's all part of that point, but I hope that you at least get the idea of the seminar. And then the systematic interventions team meets on a monthly basis and really talking about all things academic in terms of students at risk and how do we respond as an institution? And I would argue this discussion is probably the most exciting that I've had as an administrator, simply because it's asking and in some capacities forcing us as a staff to really turn inward and reflect on what our individual practices and philosophies are and put them up against others. And not in a way to say that they feel threatened or that they feel challenged by that, but that we are able to solidify what we do, because, and because I think that any good philosophy can stand up against that kind of questioning and that kind of reflection. The second piece to that is that we have, you know, we have teachers who have talked time and time again about how professional development activities are really useful when we use our own internal experts. We have so many great things going on in the school that the systematic interventions process is really asking us to share at a real in-depth level the different activity, or the different types of instructional methods, classroom management, different things that teachers are doing in response to student success and student struggles. And so that conversation, like I said, occurs on a monthly basis and really is driven by the district staff development, folks who have really put the RTI model into play. And our institution, it's a body of approximately 20 staff and administration who are looking at, how do we go about implementing the next, the next piece that will allow us to push ourselves even further in terms of those academic goals that we have? And I apologize that I'm losing my voice here. And then the climate goal, you know, a number of these things again are not unusual. The bullying presentation and bullying videos are things that are going to be kicking in beginning next week. We actually have a student who's doing some interview work on video to create a piece about, leaping ahead actually, but the student connections piece, a student doing a video that will kind of encompass different attitudes of students about how they go about building relationships with staff. of students about how they go about building relationships with staff and how staff have built relationships with them effectively. And again, similar to that idea of an internal expert, we really want the students to feel like their voices are being heard when we have questions about connections, rather than thinking that we have all the answers as the adults in the building as to how to connect with you. Tell us what works so that we can do more of that and so that those of us that aren't using those strategies can implement those strategies and make more connections. Bullying continues to be and will continue to be a focus of our piece that we have a series of videos that were produced by the Healthy Community Initiative contest, if you will, that we're going to be showing over the next few months to students and just allowing that to be, you know, a continued front burner item. Obviously, the video bullying continues to be a newsworthy story, and so we're going to continue to focus in on that. And then survey data, I feel like now here in my sixth year here, I've finally figured out how to dig further down. And with the help, certainly with the help of two subcommittees of the site council, we really feel like this survey coming up is really going to allow us to get to the heart of what the issues that the students and staff feel are living and breathing in our hallways and be able to respond to them a little more, with a little more focus and a little more intention. All right. And there you have the eleven, twelve site council. With that, if you certainly have any questions for Amanda or me, I'd be happy to answer.
And then Amanda gets to answer the questions.
Exactly.
Well, thank you. A lot of exciting things going on there. Anybody have questions or comments? Ellen?
So first, I wanted to say that I was really excited to see how the students were involved in the climate goals. And so much of community and the sense of belonging leads to academic achievement. And I think that this is really worth the time, and I'm really excited about that element of it. And then I have a question that's not covered by the presentation, but I know in addition to the student surveys, you've been doing a lot of parent surveys. And I wondered if you could share a little bit about what you've heard from the, I think most of it had to do with communications.
Sure. We, I started out the early fall, actually preschool, with a survey about means of communication in terms of what works best for parents. And we went through, I guess in the time that I had been here, we moved away from a regular newsletter, really as a cost-cutting measure, and went to a newsletter that was three times a year and then two times a year, and then it became a fall newsletter. And over the last couple of years, it's been updates that had been sent via email and then on paper to those families that don't have internet access. So I wanted to kind of get to the heart of, you know, all of the other schools were doing a regular newsletter. I wanted to see if, you know, how parents best received, most preferred to receive information. And as you can guess, as many choices as I gave them, they basically, I said, do you want this, this, or this? And they said, yes. You know, so it really kind of settled on that we have moved back to a regular monthly newsletter that comes out at the beginning of the month. And we'll continue to do what I've described to Chris as a controlled assault with the email access to parents, that we'll do a Friday update. And in those circumstances, when there's a special piece that needs to go out as a separate item or as an item that can't wait till a Friday, that we get those out. We have the nice opportunity too to subdivide by classes. So we have ninth grade family night coming up this Friday, so we can email those parents that specific detail. Last year, we had the senior, or last year, last week, we had the senior class photo in the gymnasium, so we could send that out to senior parents only. Really, what I think it reminded me to do is that if I can think of it as a way to communicate, we might as well communicate that way. Because I think that different parents, different parents kind of function differently. Some, it was interesting that I think that we've, you know, as the electronic age has kind of continued to assault us, I've assumed that more and more people are getting information from the internet and the website. But it's very clear that parents very much appreciate it being plopped on them. And I don't mean that in any disrespectful way, that a newsletter that comes with all the dates in a nice little package where they can print that one page off and put it in their fridge, or an email that comes on a regular basis so they can anticipate when that's coming. And I think really what I have settled in on is that my goal each week, each month, is that a parent can free themselves, free him or herself, from that feeling of, I wonder if I've missed anything? Because, you know, we're checking and double-checking and I think the biggest connection probably is the adaption, adaptation, the evolution of the website to its new format and just making sure that parents are, you know, if they're not getting it through the website, that we're supplying those additional pieces. Because sometimes, we can do something really loud and clear on the website and you kind of forget that, oh boy, if there aren't people viewing that. So really that, more, 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 and as many avenues as we possibly could. The other focus we did, we've been trying to evolve and really Jeff Pesh at the middle school has been trying to do this as well. One of the questions on the survey, or a number of questions in the survey had to do with parent teacher conferences. You know, as, again, the electronics of our age have kind of made us question, is it a dinosaur? And if not, do we need to evolve it in ways? So we've tried moving the parents' walkthrough, which was basically our, the high school version of the open house, fall open house, to conference date, because conference attendance was waning a little bit. That caused both events then to wane in terms of participation. So a recent survey suggested that parents want that event separated out again. And so really conferences and communication have been our two focal points of that data. It's, you know, the electronics and the Skylab system that allows us to push those questions out has really, you know, opened up a whole new avenue for us to say, we did this, what do you think? And then be able to kind of change on the fly for next time. We don't have to wait until a year later to come back and say, well, we hope that we did this right. You know, we've got data that says, you know, we want the conferences to stay in the cafeteria and in the classrooms, so split that up. We really want you not to have them on the same day as the other schools. And the interesting piece is, we have to sort through those that say, you know, I've got one that says, it's great that you had them on the same day as the middle school. And then somebody says, why in the world would you have that? So we, it's like gymnastics, you kind of sort through those scores, and you really have to go with what I think the largest percentage of the community feels is necessary.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything?
Julie?
I'm glad Ellen asked the question about the parent survey, because as a parent of a high school student, I really appreciated the extra communication. And I think it's really been very helpful. And I just wanted to commend you on your work on systematic interventions, because I think it's a very big thing to tackle. And just the addition of a structured study center, I think, is really great. And I know you'll continue to evolve and work hard on that. And I know that's a huge challenge. So I'm thrilled to see that you guys are doing that. And I just want to put some context to the graduation rate of ninety-nine point zero-two percent, because I think sometimes we realize, living in the Midwest, how high our graduation rate is. And nationally, it's like seventy percent. I mean, there are states down in the fifty percent, you know, high forty percent, and for us to be at ninety-nine percent is just huge, you know, in general, but to look at in the context of nationally, it's even that much more amazing, as Roger would say.
Even the state, it's pretty amazing. The people I've talked to across the state, when we talk about having over a ninety-nine percent graduation rate, they just look at you like they can't believe it. And I think that's the reality right now. It's just a very powerful statement about the fact that we're doing everything we can to keep kids with us, move them through the process, and get them to graduation.
I also think that's a good testimony for parenting. Bring your kids to school and do a good job.
Oh, absolutely. We have an incredibly supportive parent community and with high expectations. And I think that we all, you know, we appreciate that, because it is, it's a group of students that we have moving through this system that are fun to work with, because we know that parents have placed a value on it, as the levy showed this last week.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the fiscal 2011 audit report. We have Craig Pophenagan. Did I do that right?
Pophenagan.
Pophenagan, sorry about that. With Larson Allen, who is here with the results of the 2010-11 audit. And board members, just want to note for you, we've got a stack of things that go with that, that we're in, at our spot here when we arrived, in addition to the pieces that were in the packet.
That's right. So the main thing I'll be looking at is the blue cover.
Okay, very good.
Document. I'll just introduce myself a little bit. I'm Craig Pophenagan. I am a principal at Larson Allen. Prior years, you've had Mike Ward as your principal presenting at this meeting. And Mike is actually retiring at the end of this audit season, so there's a little bit of passing of the torch, so to speak, happening this year. I am in the process of relocating from Minneapolis to southern Minnesota, so I'll continue on my career there and continue to serve you, if you'll have me. We did meet with the finance committee about a week and a half ago and went through the materials in front of you in a fair degree of detail. A couple of things that you'll see is if you flip to the bottom of your pack, you'll see the financial statements, and you'll see that those are stamped draft. And the reason for that is it's a little bit of a ripple effect from the state shutdown. The state was shut down for three weeks in July, and that has continued to ripple on throughout the fall, when folks have to try and fit five months of work back into four months. So what we're waiting for is the state website to come back up so we can upload our compliance tables and audit results. And we want to make sure that, you know, the upload goes smoothly and actually ultimately matches the reports that we issued. So that's the reason, until that website is available to us, these reports are in draft. And once that's available, we'll do the upload and get your final reports issued. Nevertheless, we do intend these to be the final reports. The first slide here is just a snapshot of the general fund, the fund balances. Basically, you'll see in total, the general fund fund balance increased to about $2 million. So that's good. You'll see some of the categories across the top have a little different name than they did last year. That's because of a new accounting standard that was issued, GAZRE statement number 54, which changed the name, but conceptually, the purpose of those funds is consistent with prior years. So a lot of that is actually dictated to us by the state compliance manual that goes along with the upload that I just talked about. If we kind of focus on the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, previous years, this has been called unreserved fund balance, but it's now unassigned under the new guidance that we have. And, you know, this looks like a pretty good trend. Historically, you've been able to look at fund balance and feel pretty good. If you had a strong fund balance, you're in a pretty good financial position. That's been a little bit challenging. It doesn't necessarily translate with the way the state's operating today. And the reason for that is the state has actually slowed down its payment of cash over to the school district. So you have more IOUs from the state this year compared to prior years, and that's different, which really kind of shows up in the next slide. So what you historically had as fund balance, you think is in a pretty good situation, but fund balance doesn't pay bills. Cash pays bills. So if you look at the general fund cash balance, you see kind of almost an opposite scenario. And again, it's mainly due to the IOUs increasing from the state, so you have more IOUs, less cash on hand. So what that $5 million cash translates to at the end of 2011 is about a month and a half of operating expenses. And you have about $750,000 in teacher salaries to pay out yet for fiscal 11. Part of that increase is driven by a tax shift. So what happened was, the state in balancing its budget said, okay, you're state aides, we can't pay out the state aides to you by June 30th. So rather than, but we want you to be able to report healthy fund balance, that's a slide we talked about a couple of slides ago. So instead of giving you the state aide money, they let you early recognize about 3.8 million of next year's property tax levy. So you've got a couple line item shifts in the financial statements. You'll see that state aide revenue compared to budget is down, actual is down from budget. Property tax revenue compared to budget is higher. It doesn't mean that property taxes went up, it's just a little bit of accounting tricks, if you will, for the state to balance its budget, has to report a balanced budget. So if we look at the next slide, it's a recap, basically a pie chart of the general fund revenues. And kind of the total pieces of pie is about $40 million. Last year's about $39 million. So it's holding fairly consistent. But again, you saw the cash balances going down, and the reason for that is kind of that light blue sliver there called property tax shift, about 8.9% of total revenues. So your property tax piece is the 19.5 million. So that's about, that's holding pretty steady. That piece of it lasted with prior years, that's about $8 million. This light blue sliver called the property tax shift is that plus the 19.5 is what's being reported as property tax revenue this year. So on paper, it looks like property taxes went up $3.5 million to about $11.4 million. That's not, that's not what happened. It's just because of my counting, a little bit of a counting trick, that you early recognized $3.5 million of next year's levy in 2011, so that the red portion of the pie could shrink by that same $3.5 million. So-
Can I just interrupt you a little bit?
Sure.
I just want to be sure I'm fully understanding that. So what you're saying is that that brown portion, the 19.5%, that's the property taxes that we actually have received?
Right. That's the property tax you intended to levy and collect.
Right. And the 8.9% is what the state is telling us we need to report so that it looks like, well, so that they have on paper at least balanced their budget. But that's not actually money that we're receiving.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We won't actually receive that until next year or this year.
Yeah.
Right.
So you actually had two shifts. You had both a state aide shift and a property tax shift.
One's higher, one's lower.
And that accounts for that, that incredible decrease in the cash balance. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Perfect. So by comparison, we'll just do a quick comparison to 2010. This is general fund revenue in 2010. We had about a $39 million total pie. But, you know, last year, for 2010, you don't see that tax shift, because it didn't exist then. So I guess in summary, that would, that's my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer some questions if there are any, but-
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Anyone have questions for Craig? Or comments? So we have the draft financial statements, and that's what we're being asked to, that we want to approve tonight, right? Because even though the state is so behind in its reporting, we still have to meet that December 1st deadline, right?
Correct.
Of approving this audit. Okay, so while we have Craig here, if anyone's got questions, please do ask, because we are going to try to get the audit results accepted or whatever we call it tonight. Does anyone have questions? I think the big takeaway from this and the previous slide that I take from this is that the state has got to be running out of one-time fixes for its budget situation.
You at home?
And I think that's what has us all so concerned at this point, is that they, if you go back and take a look at the final slide, you see that's got the big 9.9% federal source pie. What you had there was the one-time federal stimulus money. And so at that point, you know, the state was sitting at about 66% coming from the state. They were making up what they needed to make up by grabbing the dollars from the stimulus fund and basically using that as they would state aid. If you look at the other and the local property tax sources, you'll see that those two- If you look at the other and the local property tax sources, you'll see that those two remain the same from year to year. So what's happened is the now, for this year, or the year just ending, June 30th, 2011, we saw a reduction in the amount of federal funding coming to us from the one-time stimulus. The state still had no new money to replace it with, and so the strategy for replacing it for this year was the one-time property tax shift. So what we're seeing is the state using a state aid shift, again, going from 70-30 to 60-40, using a one-time property tax shift to add an additional 9% of property tax that wasn't, that really doesn't, we don't get this year or didn't get last year, but we have to recognize and count in that year in order to balance the budget. And so the problem would be, they really can't do that shift again. They really aren't going to get any more state funding. And so as we come up to the end of this biennium, they're going to be right back where they were before. They're going to have that basically $5 billion shortfall again. And now they have used up two more major tricks that they could have used. And so I think what we're all concerned about, and again, why I think we work so hard as a district and you as a board committed to doing, is that we really can't trust the state to be able to get this figured out. And so we got to position ourselves to be in the best position we can go forward to weather the storm because I think all of us are very fearful that when we get to two years from now and the legislature tries to come back into session and is trying to solve this problem, they don't, they can't fall back on federal money, they can't advance recognize even more property tax, they pretty much run out of sources. And our fear is that the next piece will be a cut, where they will physically have to cut the budget across the board. And in that case, then every bit of cash balance that we have is going to be the only thing there to protect us.
Right. I think, you know, relative to other districts in the state, I mean, you've weathered it better than most. You haven't had to resort to short-term borrowing to balance all your cash flow, you know, between the fiscal years. So which is to say, you know, as far as a financial condition, the sky's not falling, but you do have to be careful.
Ellen?
So I'm sorry, I'm just not quite understanding the property tax shift piece. I understand we recognized it early, but what I don't understand is what does that do for us the following year? We actually, when we actually get the money, but we've already recognized it early? And, you know, how does that play out?
Right. So what happens is, what you'll see is the actual, at some point in time, the shift, this one-time fix is going to have to get reversed. It took about 10 or 15 years for that reversal to happen. The last time, we had a property tax shift. So, you know, at some point in time, you know, the state coffers will start to fill again, the economy will be strong again, but you won't see that cash flow or that shift happen back until that time.
So this shift, this property tax shift has the same effect as the 60-40 shift in terms of it just, it creates kind of a one-time cash cushion for the state that then keeps rolling forward? I suppose they could make it a larger shift?
They could make it larger.
I'm just scared in ourselves.
Yeah. The 60-40 split in 2012. So instead of $5 million at the end of next year, you're probably going to have a little bit less than that unless, depending on how you manage your funds.
Right. Right. Okay. Okay. That's not very cheerful news, Craig.
I don't. It isn't great, but it's better than something.
I do think it's important, though, with these graphics, and I think, appreciate these, because I think these are very important for the community to be aware of, is that while we build a fund balance, the fund balance is really only what you have the authority to spend. We don't, we can't back, and while at one time, we were close to being able to back the fund balance with cash, we now only have about half enough cash to really bank the fund balance. So the fund balance has a portion that's just there, it's authority with no money behind it, and the rest of it is, is actually, has cash behind it. So that becomes a problem, but it's why we have to try to maintain as much cash balance as we can because without cash balance, your only other option to spend money up to your fund balance level is to have, to go to, into a borrowing scenario.
Noel, did you have something you wanted to say?
I have a question, I have a comment. And the comment is, I think the difficulty that the public may have in understanding these two shifts is that in any other kind of a business, they wouldn't be legal. They're legal because the state said so, but in any kind of business, they would end up, land you in jail.
Yeah. That may be true.
I'm not asking you to comment.
So to the camera, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Noel. Anyone else? John?
So I was going to ask the same question that Ellen asked, but I was going to ask it far more confusingly.
You're a lawyer.
Well, at any rate, the other question I have is, so now, as I understand this now, what we're talking about is we have a, the state fund, the state contribution to our budget, we get 60% of it this year and 40% of it in the following year, right? But in addition to that, there is another 9% of our budget, which we pretend that we got because the state is telling us to pretend that we got it before we got it. So now we're talking about, well, 40% of 60% plus 9% of money that does not exist until at least July 1 of the following year. And that's what we're supposed to run the school on with 33% of our funds, 33% of our budget doesn't actually exist until a year after we're supposed to have spent it, or the year following the year that we're supposed to spend it. Is that, is that a reasonable summary of what this budget is supposed to look like from the standpoint of the legislature?
Yeah. I think you've got it.
Well, reasonable might not be the right word.
It's a realistic summary. It's a realistic portrayal, right?
Ann, I'd just like to add that thanks to Stephanie and her team, as these auditors came in and worked, they had really nice things to say about how well all the papers were in alignment, the numbers were good, and very easy to work with. And thank you and everybody behind you who made that possible.
Anyone else, anything? Okay, well, Craig, thank you very much. You may want to stick around till we get through the next action item, just to make sure we don't come up with any other questions. Because our first item for individual action is to accept the 2010-11 audit report as presented. So I would ask for that motion. Moved by Ann. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Noel. Okay. Any further questions for Craig? And just so we're clear, this is, we're accepting this as, in this draft form with the understanding that your expectation is that these numbers will not change when the Department of Ed's system comes back up into full functioning. Okay. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
What if they do?
Well, then what would we have to do, an amended? Yeah, Craig, what would we do if these numbers did change materially, well, changed at all?
Right. If they did change significantly, we basically have to kind of re-present the audit results to you for final adoption.
And your understanding, I was talking to Stephanie earlier, this December 1st deadline, that's a statutory deadline, right? So the legislature would have to be the one to change that? It's not like the department can just say, oh, never mind, we got behind.
Right. So we really hope they get that wetted up.
You're going to have a busy few weeks if they don't, or if things change.
And we'd like to know before Wednesday next week.
Yes.
That would be all good, yes. Considering we have the Thanksgiving holiday over that piece, too, so...
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, with the understanding that if they do change, we'll have to do an amended report and accept that amended report. But are we prepared to accept this as presented now? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Craig.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Well, after that very depressing news...
Thanks, Craig.
We have some very good news.
Sorry, Craig. The one saying you were depressing.
You're just the messenger.
Don't be the messenger. No. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay. So we have the resolution canvassing the results of the special election, which was held on November 8th. And I just want to remind folks that we have a corrected resolution in the table file, which just corrects the total number of voters, right? I think it was off by one.
Total number of questions voting up from 58.39 to 58.40.
Okay. So with that correction, we are here, and I think in the memo, it is set up as if there are two resolutions, but we really just have the one resolution that covers both questions. Is that right, Danita? Okay. So you have this very lengthy resolution, which summarizes the fact that the voters of the district did support both of the levy questions, and so I would ask for a motion to adopt that resolution, canvassing returns of the votes in the school district special election held on November 8th, 2011, with a yes vote on revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization and approving a new authorization for taxes payable in 2012, and the second question of renewing the capital project levy authorization for taxes payable in 2014 and thereafter, so. Moved by Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. And that needs to be a roll call, right, Danita?
Fossil?
Aye.
Newell?
Aye.
Stratmore?
Aye.
Quinnell?
Aye.
Richards?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Thanks, Danita. And I would like to thank the voters of the school district for, it was great to have so much turnout, and I'm really glad the weather held so that people could get to the polls. I've said it before, but I just want to say it again, the support of the local community has been absolutely critical to our being able to continue offering these great educational opportunities, both curricular and co-curricular for our students. And we and the students in this district are so grateful for the local community's support of the schools. We've talked a lot about what's going on at the state level. We cannot, as a local community, we cannot tax our way out of this problem at the local level. This is a problem that needs to be solved at the state level. The state funding formula is in desperate need of overhaul, and we need to make sure that our elected representatives understand how important it is that every child in Minnesota have the opportunities that the kids in Northfield have. It is not fair that a child in Northfield has so much more available to him or her than a child in another town. It was so hard to watch the results come in that night and just look at different communities and say, those kids have great opportunities and those kids don't, and that is not right. It violates the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and I know I'm getting passionate here, but I feel really strongly about this. We've got to fix this at the state level. So I just encourage people, as we move into this election year, not to be distracted by all the noise, but to really have thoughtful conversations with our elected representatives, have thoughtful conversations with people who are running, and really get to the heart of whether they will really take a serious look at overhauling the state funding mechanism for education. It is the most important thing we do as a government, is educate the next generation. This is how we are going to solve all the problems, is by producing intelligent, thoughtful people who can go forward, work together, think through these problems, and come up with solutions. And as I say, I'm grateful, so grateful, and the children of this community are so blessed to live here and have a community that supports education, but that is not enough. We have got to fix this at the state level. So that's my so far. In a calmer note, I want to thank Anita Delzer, who did an unbelievable job of managing this election. It is a tremendous undertaking for the school district to take this on as an election that we would manage all by ourselves, and Anita is the one who pulled this off with wonderful, calm professionalism and good humor and attention to detail.
Or at least the paddling was underwater.
And you were brilliant. You just did a fabulous job. So thank you. And finally, I'd like to thank Anita Fisher-Aggy and Jody Saxton-West, who really spearheaded the Citizens for Quality Education, the citizens group that advocated for this, and they were supported by many, many, many volunteers, all of whom gave up their time and their talent to support this. And we are really, really grateful for the work that they did. Without them, I don't think these levy questions would have been, would have been successful without their efforts to educate the community and make sure people knew where to vote and how to vote and when to vote, and reminding folks to get to the polls. And so we're very appreciative to Anita and Jody for their work in that effort. And again, thanks to the community for what you've done for the children of this district in supporting these levies. Okay. On we go. Now, in our effort to save the taxpayers of this district some money, we have with us Ellers to talk about refunding some bonds. And I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
I'm Jeff Seeland with Ellers.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the successful elections.
Joel, we're pretty excited about it.
Yeah. We have some handouts here. We just don't want anybody to escape until they've signed every... Yes, there are a lot of documents that are going to need to be signed before we get done. So what I'm handing out is a sale report, and what I do want to do is go over that with you. As you know, you have a resolution in front of you to award the sale of refunding bonds. And what we're refunding is the 2016 through 2024 maturities of the district's $12,640,000 general obligation school building bonds that were issued in 2003. Okay. They have a call date of March, I'm sorry, February 1, 2013. So we were looking at an advance refunding. If you remember, October 10th, I was here and I went through a preliminary estimate with you. Since that time, the market, the interest rates in the municipal market have increased. So we looked at it again, and we did some different restructuring to try to retain a significant amount of savings. And what we did is we decided to drop the amount that we were refunding below $10 million so we could get it to a bank-qualified status. What that does is allows, it makes eligible other bidders into the process. We have more competition. The idea is it drives down interest rates. So instead, we're refunding the 2016 maturities through to 2024, instead of the 2014 through to 2024. Now, you did receive a rating from Standard and Poor's, and it was an excellent rating, a very high for school districts, a AA+ which equals the state's... a very high for school districts, a double A+, which equals the state's rating. This is also backed through the credit enhancement program of the state. So if, for some reason, the school district would default, the state would step in and back the securities for the payments. You did receive six bids, and Raymond James and Associates out of Memphis was the low bid. And if you turn to the bid tab, you can see that Raymond James was the top bidder, and these are in order. And then you had Baird out of Milwaukee, Morgan Keegan out of Memphis Tennessee, Jenny Montgomery Scott of New York, Vining Sparks out of Chicago, and Piper Jeffrey out of Minneapolis. So there was a lot of interest in your particular bond, partly due to the high rating that you had. The, this is really good news because your true interest cost was bid at 2.3397%. Okay? The low bid came in at 2.34. It was adjusted, the true interest is a calculation of that adjusted for any sale day adjustments that we do. So the low bid was 2.34 to high bid 2.52. The difference, the spread between low and high bid was $238,000. Okay? The interest rate on the new bonds, if you go to, well, let's start with the sources and uses. It's got blue typing, and I guess it doesn't have a page number. Yes, it does. Page one, it says, and that's your sources and uses. Okay, you're issuing $9,750,000 in bonds. That's your sources. Your uses, you have an original issue discount of $24,657.90. What that is, that's similar to points on a mortgage. If there is a discount bid, then your interest rates will be lower. So there's, in essence, a payment to lower your interest rates. And the underwriter who is bidding this determines that, the school district doesn't. Then there's the underwriter discount, which is the fee for them to issue the bonds of $84,000. And you have your costs, which are your financial advisor, your bond attorney, your rating, your CPA verification on the escrow account, the escrow account itself, county certificates and paying agents. That's all $53,900 roughly. And then you have the pure deposit to the escrow to pay for the old bonds. And then you have to issue a $5,000 block, so you have a rounding. On page two, you can see, this is your debt that you will be refunding. And you can see we're refunding the 2016, and the left column is the maturities and the interest payments, 2016 through 2024. You can see your interest rates labeled coupon range from 4% on those to 4.6. So if you look down below, you'll see a number in the yield statistics called the average coupon of 4.488%. That's what you're refunding. The next page, page three, shows you the new bonds. And you'll start, the payments start in 2014 through 2024. And you can see the interest rates range from 2% to 2.375, quite a bit lower than your original debt. So you look at the average coupon, which is the third line down in your yield statistics, and that's 2.2%. And the old was 4.49%. Building in your costs for issuing this and so forth, your all-inclusive costs are 2.4%. Page four, which is the main page that we like to point out, the last three columns in this chart, your new debt, your old debt, and your savings. And you can see if you total up those savings, you have reduced debt payments of $1,437,000. Okay? Then down below, we present value that. So you can see a net present value benefit of $1,224,540, an 11.4% savings.
And as I recall, you said, when you were here in October, you said anything over 7% savings was considered good. And then you just said 11% savings?
Yes.
Okay.
We did very, very well on this, especially since the market was moving upwards. Page five and six is more for the numbers people. It shows your escrow cash flow. And then page six shows your pricing summary, which shows your coupon versus yield and so forth. But again, the main page is page four. Now, when I was back here in October, we were looking at a 9% savings. That was our projection. And then we had conversations with Stephanie later in October when the market was moving up, and that's when we restructured this to try to gain more savings. And that was, I believe, what, nine and a half percent, I believe, we had at that time. So the results actually were a little bit surprising that they came in so well. And now, we do a lot of advance refunding. We did some recently in the 4% to 5% range. You know, it all depends on what type of rates the original debt is carrying. But anything over 3% is allowable by state law. So when we looked at yours and we saw that we were pushing 9% or 10%, we thought it was a very good opportunity. And when we talked, we thought if you can get at least 7% with the increasing rates, you'd be doing good. We were really happy with this one.
This is great. I mean, this far exceeds the estimates that we looked at in October, in terms of the amount of savings that are realized here.
And it really is a credit to the financial management of the district. This is a very high rating. There aren't many school districts that carry that type of rating, equal to the state. And if the state keeps going, you might exceed it.
As we've explained to people, there are really only three districts that have a higher rating than us. Wayzata, Minnetoka, and Edina.
Yep, there's only a few with that.
And so.
We work harder because we're not.
We're on the floor, we gotta work harder. Jeff, I guess the other thing in terms of talking to the community about this, when you look at a savings over the course of this issue of $1,400,000, a present value savings of about $1,200,000. When we're talking to the community about this, what's the message that we should be giving them about the impact that this is gonna have on their, on the payment of debt service that's paid by property tax?
Okay, this is a direct offset of your property taxes payable 2013 through 2023. This is, because they aren't eligible for debt equalization aid, a direct reduction in property taxes. So they will be seeing reduced debt payments of 1.4, and again, we present value that down to 1.2 on this particular issue. Now, the other thing I should mention is those two maturities, the 2014 and 2015 maturities that we dropped from this, they still can be refunded. And you have a potential refunding opportunity coming up a year or so from now that we'll be watching. And we might roll them into that so we can capture those also in the future.
Because again, those have another date that they can be called, because this was actually a pre.
Yes, but the other refunding is a different debt, original debt issue. But we won't forget about those two maturities that we left out there because those we could roll in if it makes sense, obviously at the time, to try to capture savings on those too.
Okay. John, you trying to ask a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I lost the part of where the first cost is, the cost to the district now to do the refunding.
Oh, that's in the, it's on the very bottom, it's called page one, it's sources and uses. It's got the blue heading on it.
It's not blue on ours.
It's not blue on ours, it's just black.
Oh.
But it's page one.
I mean, it's not the physical.
Never mind.
It's about the third piece of paper.
It's this page, yeah.
Right.
And you'll see the par amount of bonds, $9,750,000, and then you'll see the uses, and that identifies your cost.
And that's roughly $150,000, or a little bit more than that.
A little more than that, yes.
And for that cost, then, we save $1.4 million over the next 10 years, roughly $125,000 to $130,000 each year for the next 10 years.
Yes.
And so you calculate a present value of that savings of $1.2 million, so.
Right.
It's really, yeah, like a 10% return just on the, on the cost. Or 10, that's a thousand percent return though.
Thousand percent return on your cost, yes.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff?
Close enough.
No question for Jeff, yeah, there we go.
Did our credit rating change during the thought process of this whole thing? Or was it?
Did it change during the what?
Because the levy cast?
From the time you talked to us until now, or did the credit rating change?
We had a new rating issued. You were not rated by Standard and Poor's, your last one was through Moody's. And we went with Standard and Poor's this time. So they issued a new rating. If you look in the Standard and Poor's report, they actually listed as a new rating, double A plus, stable.
Thank you.
Standard and Poor's has a reputation for being kind of hard on governmental entities. So we feel pretty good about that.
Especially the federal government and the state.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? Let's see. Well, yes, no, I'm all over that, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we need to do this in the form of a resolution, so I'd ask for a motion approving this, to approve the resolution awarding the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2011A. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Ellen. Give Noel the second.
I'll second.
Okay, and then that needs to be a roll call, right?
Yes.
Stratmore?
Aye.
Quinnell?
Aye.
Richards?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Awesome?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Danita. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
If I could just insert one thing. Again, I think it's important as board members think about this and as you talk to people in the community, again, with a $1.4 million savings over that 10-year block, it's important to say to folks, this is money that will actually reduce your property tax in this area, because we cannot, this is debt, this is debt service payment. So when this savings is there, it will actually physically reduce the property tax payments that individuals will need to make across the entire district during that entire 10-year period. And again, this is not the first time we've done a refunding like this. But again, our focus always is, whenever we can do something like this, we try to move these pieces forward because these have a direct and positive impact on reducing property tax efforts that our community has to make. And it cannot be used for anything else. So the savings we have here can't go someplace else. The savings here have to go directly back to the taxpayers in the form of a reduced taxation for the debt service. So just to make that happen.
Very well put.
Very good.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's American Education Week. November 13th to the 19th is American Education Week, and we do have some things planned. We have the Retired Educators Luncheon on November 16th, and the Staff Appreciation Breakfast on November 23rd at the middle school. That's an event that's cosponsored by the Northfield Education Association. We're excited this year because we'll recognize again that Dr. Richardson was named the Minnesota Superintendent of the Year by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. We also celebrate with our employees, those who have reached service milestones with the district. And it's always very exciting when the association presents its Teacher of the Year Award and Paraprofessional of the Year and the Friend of Education Awards. And so I would just like to read the American Education Proclamation to recognize the folks who do so much for our students. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, education employees work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, the Board of Education of the Northfield Public Schools do hereby proclaim November 13th through the 19th as the 90th Annual Observation of American Education Week. So I'd ask for a motion to approve that proclamation. Moved by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. There are a couple items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anybody wants to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Go move.
Moved by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The first item for information is a letter of support for the city to consider a complete streets policy for the city of Northfield. Dr. Richardson, you want to talk through that?
Sure. I had had a conversation with a couple of our board members present, with Betsy Buckhite, who is a counselor on the city council. Currently, the city is considering a complete streets policy, which is really a policy that makes sure that when street improvements or modifications are done, that the interests of pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and buses are all taken into consideration. And what had been requested for us to consider was the possibility of providing a letter of support to the city in this matter. And I think while we clearly understand that the decision about this is the city's decision to make, we also felt that it was reasonable and appropriate for the school district to indicate its support, that especially when there is, there are planned modifications of streets that are around existing or future school buildings, that all of those things be considered in terms of how bicyclists, motorists, buses, et cetera, all use those particular spaces. And so this letter simply provides support for them to consider that, and that if such a policy would be enacted, that our hope then would be that the school district could be consulted and could be a partner in discussing modifications to streets, et cetera, that are around the location of any of our existing or future buildings.
So as you can see in the memo, this is a draft letter that Dr. Richardson is proposing to put forward, and we just wanted to kind of put it out there for the board to see if anybody had any feedback about that proposed letter. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
What have we ever had on lowering the speed limit up? And is that? Well, again, I know that that's a continuing discussion. It always comes back to the issue that the fact that we're talking about Minnesota Highway 246, which means it is under the control of MnDOT. We saw that, obviously, with the construction process this summer, where when it came down to, when are we gonna get this together and how's it gonna work, there wasn't a lot of consideration for whether schools needed to be in session, buses needed to travel, cars needed to get in, and so on. I think in terms of this particular policy, although it's not directly tied to looking at that area, it does at least, I think, require the city to do some thinking about at that area, it does at least, I think, require the city to do some thinking about when it's dealing with streets that it has total control over, that there would be consideration about turn lanes, bike lanes, you know, bus pathways, other types of pieces that need to be there. I think on the other piece, Jeff, it still is a piece that really goes beyond control of the city, and is something that I know, again, the last time we were able to get any traction at all, we had to bring both our senator and representative together to sit down with MnDOT, even to talk about getting a stop sign at that corner, let alone looking at any kind of speed modification.
Anybody else have any thoughts on the letter?
I just always prefer bike paths to bike lanes, but.
I think all the letters, the letter just indicates that they will take into account. Oh, yeah, it does say that the need for.
It mentions lanes, not paths.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the last paragraph.
Last paragraph, you would like paths.
I would like, but.
Because I guess my sense is a bike path is off the street. A bike lane is the lane that's got the painting of the bicycle.
I also prefer bike paths, especially for children.
But I'm very happy, path or lane, makes me no never mind.
Okay. All right. Anyone else, any thoughts on the letter?
Yeah, that's a good change. No, I think it's well-written, and I think it's important that we weigh in.
Well, and again, I wanted to make it very clear, as we've had this discussion a couple times before on the board, we're not in the position of telling the city what to do, and would never want to be in that position. But I do think it's important that we weigh in on those pieces where it does impact our students and our parents and the people that are using our facilities in terms of being able to get in and out of them. And I think, hopefully, that's the balance that this letter provides.
And again, student safety is number one, so.
Exactly. Exactly. Without a doubt.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Second item for information is the enrollment report for November 1st. And then we also have always an interesting report, the enrollment options report, which, you know, shares with all of us the fact that we have 262 students coming to our schools from other school districts. And we also have a fair number of students who go out to charter schools, other public schools, who homeschool, and also go to private schools. So I guess we have somewhat fewer students who are leaving us for other educational choices. But that's always a very interesting report. It's really kind of fun to parse them, see where kids are going, the kind of choices families are making. Future meetings coming up, we have the second meeting in November, on Monday, November 28th. Just the one meeting in December, December 12th. And then we'll be into the new year. So our first meeting in January, on January 9th, that's, you may remember, the organizational school meeting, or organizational board meeting, which then is immediately followed by the regular school board meeting. And all of those are at 7 o'clock right here in the High School Media Center. Anything else?
I just might want to go check here in terms of the.
Yes. And we can take care of this after we adjourn, but I just want to remind everybody that Dr. Richardson, the Minnesota Superintendent of the Year, will be honored at the Minnesota School Boards Association Leadership Luncheon, which is on January 12th. And we're going to get a reserved table for all of us so we can sit together. So we just, you know, want to get a head count of who all is going to be able to go to that luncheon and see, it's a great luncheon, but especially great for us this year because Dr. Richardson will be honored. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd move adjourned.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.